Come to order, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. Gault?
Present.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. Tonight, we have Pastor Lynn Shirley here with the First Presbyterian Church. Thank you for being here, Lynn, and he's going to lead our invocation. And the pledge of allegiance tonight, Commissioner Wilson, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. God of wind and rain, storm and silence, past and future, as your Spirit breathed life into chaos in beginning and brought forth your very good creation, so breathe life into the chaos of our days that they may become days of order and purpose, of sanity and accomplishment. As your Spirit breathed life into the diversity of your world and brought forth unity, so breathe through our diversity and make us one community, still rich in diversity, still filled with the gifts to build up life for all, but united in our attempts at listening and reaching out to those who disagree with us, and united in our ultimate goal of giving peace and comfort, hope and happiness to those around and among us. By the fresh breath of your Spirit, broaden our awareness of others, our sensitivity to their conditions and needs, give us courage in our risk-taking for others' well-being, and give us joy in the work your Spirit inspires and empowers us to do for all your children with whom we share your still very good creation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, I would like to recognize a couple of scholarship recipients, they're leaders and achievers here in our community. And each year Comcast and the Comcast Foundation commit a significant portion of its resources to motivating young people to achieve their potential, to be involved in their schools and to be catalysts for positive change in their communities. And these two young ladies here tonight are just that. Mike, would you like to come up and introduce them, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the council recognizing these two young ladies. They're outstanding students, outstanding citizens of Paducah, and we really appreciate you attending the awards luncheon today also. Let me first begin by, do you want them to come up and then?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's begin with Elizabeth Behrens from Paducah-Tillman High School. If you want to come up and just tell a little bit about yourself and what your plans are.
And she took off from work to come here tonight, so.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Behrens. I graduated from Tillman this past year. I plan on going to the UK Engineering College here at Paducah.
And you said chemical engineer is what you'd like to study?
And in chemical engineering, yes.
So that's great. Thank you so much.
And also, we recognize today Michaela Jones from St. Mary High School.
As you said, I just graduated from St. Mary High School, and I plan to attend Western Kentucky University in engineering as well, and I got into the Honors College, so I will also be taking honors classes.
Thank you so much. Isn't it great to see these two young women that are going into engineering, too? I'm really proud of you all. Thank you. And I have an award presentation tonight for, I'd like to present William Bill Usher and his wife Ginger. Present Bill with a Duke of Paducah. If you'll come on up, Bill. So Bill, you know, you've been so involved in our community. Come around this way a little bit, so I can stand in front of the mic. You've been involved in our community for many, many years, and weren't you instrumental in starting the shop with a cop?
In Paducah, yes.
Okay, so I know, how many, 25 or 30 years you've been doing?
Twenty-odd years, I think.
So, you know, it's such a wonderful program, and our Paducah Police Department does a great job with that, and I know that you and Ginger both have supported that each year.
Ginger's worked very hard. I just kind of did the other stuff.
Well, it's both important. It's a team effort. So you've been a friend of Paducah and Western Kentucky for many, many years, and I wanted to present you with a Duchess and Ginger with a, you with a Duke, I'm sorry, and Ginger with a Duchess.
There you go.
I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining and hestimony whereof. I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be hereto affixed, done at Paducah, the 10th day of June, in the year of our Lord, Gail Kahler, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I know you had a birthday recently, so may I wish you a happy birthday?
Let's see.
Sixty-five?
Yeah. I've been eighty-five now for about a week.
Oh, well, congratulations.
About a week, thirteen hours, to be exact.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency CPIU rate adjustment presentation. John?
Yes, Ma'am Mayor. We, a couple of years ago, State Auditor Adam Edelin started looking at all of the entities that could tax a community, and I think you were looking at stuff like volunteer fire departments and other things. And they came up with a House Bill, it's called House Bill 1, and it turned into KRS 65A, and it's called Special Purpose Governmental Entities. They rolled a bunch of people into it, and I actually know that Paducah Waters is in it, too, and they rolled us into it. It's basically any entity that can apply a rate or a fee outside of city or county government, and it also excludes, I think it was electrical providers that elect their board. I think JP may be excluded or something like that. So they have a bunch of requirements that they want us to do. A couple of requirements, well, most all of them for us is really no big deal. We have ethics policies, and they want those things. They want a budget, and we obviously do a budget. They want a fee, so we now get to pay the state government a fee. But one of the things that they want us to do, anytime that you do adjust your rates, they want you to come in front of a commission or a county fiscal court meeting and do what they call provide testimony. And I'm only just telling you that just so you'll understand. You probably have more people come and do this from time to time. But anyway, for the sewer agency, what KRS 65A wants you to do is they want you to provide a notice to the city or the county, which I did. I sent Jeff a letter a couple of weeks ago. And then they want us to do a, they want us to do a public meeting like this, and have it be on the agenda. So I think we've taken care of what we needed to do. A little bit of history on what we're doing and the impact to the average ratepayer. City and the county, our board, JSA Board recommends a rate structure, and then the city and the county convene actually jointly, and they did this in 2005, and they vote separately for the rates. So the city and the county actually approve our rate structure. However, that rate ordinance was passed in 2005, and we equalized rates for city and county in 2009. After 2009, JSA Board was allowed to annually adjust rates based on the Consumer Price Index for urban, and our board decided that we would look at the April CPIU and make an adjustment if we decide to every July 1st. And so we looked at the April CPIU, and it was actually 2%, but we don't want to adjust any higher. Obviously, 2% doesn't correlate to exactly a cent increase. It might be 8.2 or 8.4 or whatever. So we decided on an eight cent per thousand rate adjustment. That's about a 1.8% change. Current rate was $4.35 per thousand. The new rate would be $4.43 per thousand gallons usage. The average homeowner uses about 5,000 gallons a month, so the impact to the average homeowner in Paducah and McCracken County is going to be about 40 cents. So it's not a substantial rate change for them, but it is a rate change nonetheless. Now, some people use more and some people use less. Nobody uses the exact amount in sewer, but it is about a 5,000 gallon usage. Doesn't really impact our rates as we compare with other utilities, because a lot of utilities are doing the same thing. And I mentioned previously, right now, our rates across Kentucky are about 65% of the state average. State average is, say, $32 to $33 per month for 5,000 gallons, and we're still at $21 or $22 a month. So we're still in pretty good shape there. Now, you guys are all aware, we've got substantial division of water, unfunded mandates, and we're working a lot of those, and it's a lot of money, and we are self-funded. So, you know, we're always going to be having to look at our rates, and I know our rates will go up at some point, because you just can't do all that work without having to have some funding mechanism. But we always want to watch how we spend our cash and try to be judicious with it, all while still trying to satisfy Environmental Protection Agency, to satisfy the federal government, who I'm not sure knows about funding limits and/or restraint. But anyway, that's what I'm here for tonight. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I think your board does a great job. It's a well-run board, financially sound, and I think you all make really good decisions in your cognizance of the ratepayers in those cases, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a constant struggle, because you're dealing with entities that don't have a comprehensive knowledge of rate impact, and I'm not sure that they care. They care more for end result for them, and so it's a battle, and we fight it all the time, and I'm fighting several right now with them, trying to be as cost-efficient as we can, fully well-knowing that we're going to have to spend a whole, whole, whole lot of money. I've made that pretty clear. So we do appreciate the support for the city, and I just want to thank you guys on behalf of our board.
Thank you. Our next presentation is North 34th Street at the intersection of Pines Road and the railroad crossing, and we have representatives tonight from Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Canadian National Railroad, and the HMB Professional Engineers, Inc., and our own Rick Murphy.
Mayor Commission, I ask these gentlemen to come and make this presentation tonight. There's been some activity in the federal government wishing to fund dangerous railroad, what they believe to be dangerous railroad crossings across the country. Early in 2002, '03, '04, somewhere along in there, the Pines Road at 34th Street got, was labeled one of eight dangerous railroad crossings across the state of Kentucky, and my office was contacted several years ago, and this has been an ongoing issue with getting this project completed for several reasons, and that's hopefully the explanation you'll get this evening. When I was called out on this project, I went out there and I met with Mr. David Davis, of whom is with the District 1 Office of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and I'm like, gentlemen, what are we here to meet about? And we were talking about this crossing, and I was surprised that Mr. Davis was there, because Pines Road is a city street, and 34th Street is a city street, and we have state representatives of the Highway Department here. And then that's when I was educated about this program going across the country, whereas these crossings are being funded federally. Ninety percent of the money that it takes to do this comes from the federal government. Ten percent of the money, I believe, comes from the railroad. Is that correct, John? And in lieu of me trying to make this explanation, I asked that Wes Mattingly from HMB come. He's the design engineer for the project, and give you all a full explanation and the impact this may have to some of the city of Paducah traveling public. So with that being said, Wes, would you mind taking through this?
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, everybody. So we're looking, you know, the purpose of this project is obviously to improve safety at these intersections. This particular intersection has, you know, 34th Street and Pines Road coming together, and then it has the Atgrave Railroad Crossing coming right there, the same location. So there's quite a bit going on. Right now, the only thing that's out there is a signal for the rail, to control the railroad. So the problem with that and the safety issue with that is that, you know, although you have a light there, it doesn't mean it stops people from going. People can still cross when they want to. If they get in a hurry, they can take that chance, and, you know, that's the safety issue here that we're looking at. So the first thing we looked at to solve this problem was to install gates at each one, at each one of the legs, basically two on Pines Road and one on North 3rd Street. It's the red lines on the picture here. But the way that the geometrics of it all made, you know, there was a bunch of space between the 34th Street gate and the actual tracks. And what can happen is, like a school bus or even some large trucks, they have to come up to the tracks, look both ways before they cross. Well, if they were in that process and they moved up there and were setting up tracks looking both ways, and then the gate comes down, well, they're trapped. And they might, you know, it could actually cause those, that driver to panic and maybe even drive across the railroad to get away from it. So that's the problem with that option. So we moved into, you know, a second option, which is to close 34th Street and install the gates on Pines Road only. So basically, what we're looking at doing is paving, doing the removal of pavement shown there in red, right there at the intersection of Pines Road and 34th Street. And then we'll come in and also construct a turnaround there in blue, and that'll keep, you know, if the truck was to come in from Central Avenue end, it would allow them to turn around and go back out the same way they came in. And then we'll also overlay 34th Street through that area where we're working. So at the end of 34th Street, we're looking at putting up some guardrail to, as a barrier to keep any vehicles from going past that point. We will sign it so that it's, you know, very visible. You'll have a dead-end sign. You'll have no parking signs, and then you'll have these red diamonds that you see on there. They will, they're kind of delineate the end of the road. That same configuration will also go on the turnaround, at the end of the turnaround, with the exception, I don't really think we have to put in the dead-end sign, so I did not include that. Now, the 34th Street stuff that's going on, all of the pavement removal, the overlay and the turnaround will be done, will be handled by Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The railroad gates and the signals will be done by the railroad, P&amp;I Railroad. So P&amp;I Railroad is also donating the right-of-way and the easements to construct that turnaround to the city of Paducah. So this is what the, what one of these gates will look like generally in that area. Project schedule, we're looking at going to a letting in August, which means we would probably begin construction in the fall. Should take about a month. The railroad signaling gates, like I said, it's going to be handled by the railroad. Well, they will be done concurrently, and it should take them-
Two weeks, roughly?
Two to three weeks. So it'll be concurrent, but that will all be coordinated together. Some other details, estimated construction cost is $85,000. Hundred percent of that is funded by the railroad safety funds. Well, I guess it's ninety, then, but. Anyway, no money to you all. The, and then I wanted to point out to you that the turnaround does become the property of the city of Paducah for any future maintenance. That wraps up the presentation. We'll take any questions you have at this time.
So when you close that road, there won't be any kind of issues with safety vehicles that have to get in there? They'll have, where's the turnaround going to be again? The last house on the right will be the turnaround?
Yeah, this again. Back up to the railroad tracks. Why am I having trouble figuring out where to go here? There. It's kind of a southeast of the intersection with Pines Road. Let me see what I'm-
It's on-
It's in the blue.
The 34th will dead-end right there.
Yes, 34th will dead-end.
Go one more, go the other way. Okay, right there's what I'm talking about on 34th Street.
Okay, the red area, the red area there?
No, no. If you'll go back.
That's just a vacant.
If you bring a big fire truck up 34th Street, do you have plenty of room to turn around there?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, if I can get this cursor to work, as a matter of fact, the turnaround has been designed for a school bus-
Okay.
-which is essentially the same size as one of our pump trucks here, and that was the designed vehicle, because if we had, say, schoolchildren living in this portion of 34th Street, at least a school bus could come down to here, back in and turn around and leave out.
All right. Have you all had any meetings with the neighbors? I mean, are they aware of this going on?
I've actually, when we met with Mr. Davis out there, I met with Coach Trainum. Coach Trainum lives in this house here on the corner, made him aware of that. His biggest concern was that we maintain a decent access to that, and with them overlaying the street and providing that, he said, sure, I'll be inconvenienced, but I also understand that with this, is a high-speed crossing as well as a frequent crossing of rail traffic, that he understood the situation, and we was trying to make that safer. The main reason we're bringing this to you all this evening is because I'm sure that once this work begins, changing the circulation, the traffic circulation, will create some, I guess, discomfort, because it's a change, and it's something that, well, it's been there. I'm sure you're going to hear, it's been there for 40 years. Well, there's new programs, and with highway safety programs ramping up railroad crossings, there's, I don't know if you've read about it, but there's a lot of emphasis on railroad crossings being improved for better safety, and we've seen a lot of it on TV. Even though the gates are there, people will drive around it, and you'll see all kinds of things take place. So we're trying to make improvements in the area. They're trying to make improvements in the area. I looked for every way possible to find some other avenue to make this. They will tell you that as well, to look out for the interest of Paducah citizens here. And quite frankly, what the presentation is, is the best answer. It's not necessarily the most convenient, but it is the best answer for safety.
Thank you. You know, we've, with Canadian National Railroad, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
John Diney.
John. Do you live here in Paducah?
No, ma'am. I'm a little bit south.
Okay, well, you know, I've had a lot of people talk to me about the different trestles around Paducah, and, you know, we'd like to have some input. I don't know, see, I don't understand, some of the rails are, the rails themselves are owned by one company, but maybe the trestles owned by another company. Would you explain that?
We were having fun. We were joking about this before. The P&amp;I Railroad is actually a, three railroads own the track in a consortium, and we maintain, we, the Illinois Central, maintain the rail, and most of the structures within the city of Paducah, the bridge over the How River is maintained by the Burlington Northern, and somewhere falls in there, the P&amp;L, which got rights from the CSX, maintains some other stuff. So it's kind of a, it depends on which structure you're talking about.
Broadway.
That'd be us.
Okay. I'd like to talk to you about that someday.
Okay.
Would you call me?
I will definitely call you. I will leave you a card. I know they've got my numbers very well. I do get up here occasionally.
Please call me when you're back, and maybe we could talk, and-
Okay. Not a problem.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Abraham, minutes? Please, I forgot to say please.
I wasn't waiting on that. I was trying to find a document. I move that the reading of the minutes for May 27, 2014, and June 3, 2014, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes, I'm sure?
Mm-hmm.
City clerk, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Okay, we're going on to our appointments.
Okay.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Mary Hoy as a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals. This term will expire June 30, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kahler in reappointing Mary Hoy as a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the following appointments to the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors in accordance with the City Ordinance Number 2014-5-8140, Landy Bryant, Woodruff, and Darlene Mazone, whose terms will expire on June 10, 2018, and Mari McGarvey and Sharon Poet, whose terms will expire June 10, 2017, and Zachary D. McMillan, whose term will expire June 10, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kahler and appoint the following members to the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors: Landy Bryant Woodruff, Darlene Mazone, Mari McGarvey, Sharon Poet, and Zachary McMillan.
Second. Thank you. Steve, thank you for your work on this, and got a great board to work with and some really great committees, some new people in the committee, so it's all pretty positive. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
On to motions. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed: Certificate of Liability Insurance for Asphalt Paving, Inc. and AST Environmental, Inc., contracts and agreements for reimbursement agreement with Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project, reimbursement agreement with Paducah Power System for Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project, and agreement with TAG Truck Center to purchase two diesel dump trucks, Paducah General Obligation Refunding Bond, Series 2014A, Financial Advisor Engagement Contract, Engagement Letter for Bond Counsel, and Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for April 30, 2014.
Need a second.
Second, dear.
Thank you. City clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please, under municipal orders.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners, of the city of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
We can tell it's pool time again with all of our lifeguards. City clerk, please. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We'll go to ordinance's adoption. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Execution of an Online Grant Agreement and All Documents Relating There To," with the U.S. Department of Justice for 2014-2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice to be used by the Paducah Police Department and authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Fiscal Court of McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city of Paducah hereby approves the execution of an online grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for 2014-2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant in the amount of $13,117 to be used by the Paducah Police Department to purchase mobile radios. No local match is required. Further, the city hereby approves the execution of an interlocal agreement between the city and county for the grant agreement approved.
Second.
City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving a Memorandum of Understanding Amongst GPDC Incorporated Doing Business Under the Assumed Name of the Greater Paducah Industrial... Excuse me, Economic Development Council Incorporated and Genova Products, Inc., with respect to a public project, authorizing the execution of the Memorandum of Understanding and other documents related thereto." This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to approve a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between GPDC, Inc., doing business under the assumed name of Greater Paducah Economic Development Council and GPDC, and Genova Products, Inc., a Michigan Corporation, corporation. Pursuant to the MOU, the GPDC is to provide certain economic incentives to corporation in order to induce corporation to develop and locate a vinyl building products facility to a certain building located at 5400 Commerce Drive, Paducah, Kentucky, within the boundaries of the Paducah-McCracken County... Paducah... McCracken County, Kentucky. I'm sorry. Two words left down. The ordinance approves the form of the MOU presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city with such changes therein shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and the city manager.
Second. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
It's good to have more jobs in Paducah soon. Okay, ordinance's introduction. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government." This ordinance is summarized as follows: Adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at $67,858,815 and summarized by fund as follows: General, $33,185,160. MAP, $1,639,200. Investment, $5,312,390. CDBG, $1,250,000. E911, $1,684,035. Court awards, $25,750. Debt, $3,173,080. CIP, $7,664,250. Solid waste, $4,912,565. Civic center, $81,725. Rental, $134,092. Radio depreciation, $126,940. Fleet, $545,905. Fleet trust, $1,824,200. Self insurance, $1,020,495. Health insurance, $3,771,700. AEPF, PFPF, TRSTS, $1,506,500, for a total of $67,858,815.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so this is our introduction tonight. We'll have a second reading on this. Any comments?
No comment.
Jeff, do you want to...
Well, we, of course, made a very lengthy presentation some weeks ago, followed up with a couple of changes that the commission requested that have been well documented in the media. Importantly, the proposal for monies to repaint the train or at least a portion of it is going to go into a project fund and the opportunity will be given for a local-based initiative to come forward and make a proposal to access some portion of that money with the open expectation that can be done less expensively than what a estimate that we obtained indicated it might be. So, you know, we'll see how that goes and hopefully, hopefully it'll pan out.
All right. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Finance Director to Pay for the Emergency Repair Total Reconstruction Work to the Number Two Pump Located at Flood Wall Station Number Two, 1416 North Sixth Street," and transfer funds in the amount of $134,673 from various accounts for payment. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The finance director is hereby authorized to pay Precision Machine Incorporated in the amount of $134,673 for the emergency repair, reconstruction of the Number Two Pump located at Flood Wall Station Number Two, 1416 North Sixth Street. Furthermore, the finance director shall transfer funds from the accounts listed below to the Flood Wall Repair upkeep property plant account for the payment authorized. $50,000 will come from the commission contingency. $23,500 will come from the administrative contingency. $61,173 from the engineering public works residual operational accounts totaling $134,673 total funds to be transferred.
Second.
Mayor Commission, kind of complicated to provide this information to you without, I guess, graphics and stuff, but situation at pump plant number two at Six and Northview, you have seven pumps that are in there. They range anywhere from 100 horsepower up to 800 horsepower with a 313,000 gallon per minute pumping capacity. All the pumps don't run at one time when they're running. This particular pump is a pump that pumps out the treatment plant's effluent. And when the river gets to an elevation of 27 and a half feet, that's when the pump plants actually go into action. And it's... Pump plant number two is the only pump plant to go into action at 27 and a half feet. Now, if it's a sunshiny day, but we're still having sanitary sewer waste flow to the treatment plant, there's actually 12 MGD a day that come off the treatment plant. And the only way it can make it back to the river is that this pump be able to run and pump it back to the river. This particular pump is 60 years old and it locked up on us in May of last year and we're just now getting it back online. And within your procurement policies or ordinances, you have the authority through the city manager's signature to authorize emergency work to be done on these pumps or anything you might have. The situation here is that when that pump went down, the treatment plant relied on that. We couldn't predict what the water situations were going to be come in September. Therefore, we avoided... We took the emergency path to have this pump repaired on what they call timing materials with Precision Machine. It was initially estimated that it would cost about $86,000 to fix, but it's kind of like, once you get the patient on the table and you take it apart, you realize you don't have a whole lot to work with. So, all said and done, the pump is being reinstalled at $134,000. Basically, we had to rebuild the entire pump from the floor down and connect to piping that was... I refer to it as like trying to do a heart transplant on a very senior citizen where you're putting in a heart and you're trying to tie it to the tissue that's old and it just doesn't match up. So, we had a lot of difficulty with this and it's going back in and be back in service. This pump, the good news on this is the core, you know, you've heard me talk about for the last 16 years, the project we're working with the core to get all of our pump stations rebuilt. We're keeping up with these dollars that we're spending so we can pursue yet another exception to policy so that the monies that we spend today will be considered as match in the future for a future project. So, we already have $2.1 million of investment for the pipe slip lining. That's already your match for a $7 million project as we experience these things that were identified in the feasibility report that need attention, this pump being one of them. I'm going to ask them, "We've spent the money to fix it. It was planned to be fixed in a bigger project program, but time got us. The pump locked up. We had to fix it now before we could get everything arranged with the federal government." So, we're keeping up with these items so that we can recover them as match in the future.
If I could just comment on the financial part of this, and of course, we anticipate that the big project to be, to fund our match and large portion, forgive me for saying this newspaper, but from bonded funds because it's so large. In this particular instance, our funding of this entirely, although we may get reimbursement, hope to get reimbursement someday, is coming out of cash on hand that, by the way, was not budgeted. And this is effectively going to reduce the reserve in the general fund by this amount of money. And just to show you the extremes that we're going to identify this money, just about 62,000 of it is unspent appropriations throughout the Public Works Department. But it's also using the entire amount of the current year's appropriation for the city commission's contingency as well as the remaining balance in the city manager's contingency. So, this is, you could call it scraping the bottom to come up with the appropriation authority here. And we happen to be fortunate that the cash was there a little more readily than certainly what it has been in prior years. So, the timing for something like this would never be good, but in a certain sense, it probably would have been worse if it had been two or three years ago. Rick wanted to bring that thing up here. You know, he always likes props, but it weighs a few tons, so we had to shut that operation down.
And I was asking the city manager, that's the one we talked about a long time ago. It's a... How tall is it, that pump?
Well, they vary. It's about 30 feet tall. When you're standing in pump station number two, the depth of the wet well is about 30 feet below your feet. And... But they vary and someday I might get you down in one and let you see some of the, I guess, infrastructure that a lot of people in Paducah don't realize what was built in the late '30s that's still running.
And we do get a guarantee, Brian? We get a guarantee on the pump?
Five-year, $50,000 warranty Chrysler's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
When it rains like it has in the last three, seemed like forever, the average person doesn't understand exactly what happens with all that water and how the pumps figure into that. So, since you're at the mic, could you briefly explain what happens to that? And if those pumps aren't working the way they're supposed to work, what happens?
Okay. Well, Commissioner Abraham, we've known each other for a long time and it's difficult for me to be brief on a question like that, but I'll make my attempt to do that. What I would love for the Paducah public to realize is watch the river gauge. Watch the river gauge. If the river gauge is below 27 and a half feet, we don't have any pumps running because think about those pumps as a straw in a coke. If your straw is not in contact with what you're wanting to pull out of it, it can't pump anything. Okay? So, when the river is below 27 and a half feet, the pump intake itself is still several feet above the water. Okay? But a lot of people in our community believe that the pumps pump all the rainwater out of the city. And that's only when we have a river above 27 and a half feet and rising because we basically become a bowl. Since we have a 12-mile levee, our rainwater can't leave and the only time it's pumped out is when the river is high. But these last rains that we've had over the past several weeks, I'd say six weeks and especially, I think about two weeks ago, we had a horrendous rain. We had like five inches in an hour. And your storm sewer systems are not designed to carry the capacity of a five-inch rain. You basically design for about a three to four-inch intensity. And if you get five inches of rain in, let's say, 30 or 40 minutes, most every system, it doesn't matter whether it's a Paducah system, a Louisville system, it will flood because the curb box inlets, you know, like you see out in the grates and stuff, they're only designed to take so much water. And if you're in a low-lying area, we also have combined sewers. So, you have a combined sewer that's taking two capacities. One, the wastewater that's coming off of all the buildings and all the houses, and then also the storm sewers. Or the storm sewers are tied to that and they're going in. So, areas, and everybody knows the areas of town that flood because they're in those areas of large combined sewers and flat. Paducah is flat and we know that. And when we have those hard rains, it just overwhelms the system and overwhelms the curb box inlets. And we have flash flooding in areas of town. It has absolutely nothing to do with the pumping capacity when the river is low. So, that's something that I get. I had a lady one time. I went out to give her an explanation and tried to help her because she had experienced some flooding in her home. And there was the vortex, you know, you see when water's trying to get somewhere. A vortex was out there in the street above one of those curb box inlets. And she said, "Oh, good, they've turned the pumps on because it's got this vortex running." That's just a matter of physics. It didn't have anything to do with the pump station. It was three miles away. So, but that's what some of our public believe is that when we have the hard rains, that our pumps are not working, but it's not anything to do with that. It's just the system fills up and has no capacity to carry the storm water off.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
That brief explanation.
Rick. That education. We can handle about, how many inches? Like a couple inches now, where you say?
Well, actually, actually, if John were here, John Hodges with JSA, essentially, you're about a one-inch rain, he starts having combined sewer overflows. It's where his sanitary sewers are filling up and they start overflowing and discharging into the neighboring streams. And he has to report that every time that happens.
It used to be an inch an hour or just a one-inch?
A one-inch rain. It doesn't... Yeah. And that happens frequently. And that's why he's having to do a lot of unfunded mandates with regulatory agencies to get that down. The city of Paducah's system is probably 85 to 90 years old. And the sizes of those pipe, and you've got to think about, you know, do you have the prosperity of development? Meaning, you have a lot of buildings, a lot of concrete, a lot of hard surfaces in lieu of grass. Water runs off hard surfaces fast. And if you've been successful at development and have not enlarged your sewer systems, it's not going to carry the runoff as well and you're going to get surface flooding. And... And so, some, some areas of town were separated in downtown several years ago, some out in the Jefferson Street area. But there are other areas of town that are just flat that's difficult to drain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Investors Bureau for Specific Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Investors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the 2014 American Cultural Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Uh, City Managers' Report.
Briefly, Rick Murphy, Mayor Kayler, and myself, we're traveling to Frankfurt tomorrow for a five o'clock Frankfurt time meeting with the Secretary of the Transportation Cabinet, Hancock, doing some wrap-up work on the Olivet Church Road project. As everybody knows, that project is underway with the utility relocates and so on and so forth. So we need to get a couple of things tied up before we can proceed with the construction contract. Only other thing is asking for executive session on two items, economic development and threat of litigation.
I would just like to say a couple of things. That Thursday, June the 12th, from 9:30 to 11:30, McNabb Elementary School is having a front parking lot lemonade sale, and they're using the money for their kids' company Tool Science and Math Summer Camp. So everybody go by McNabb School on Thursday morning and buy a glass of lemonade and make a kid happy. And, um, on July the 19th, we're having a Showcase Paducah in downtown. Steve, do you want to talk about that a little bit? Do you mind? Or I could just read it off here. You may just read it off. July the 19th, from 10 to 4 p.m., Showcase Paducah. On this special summer Saturday, Paducah Downtown will be showing off businesses that will be open. Empty properties will be available for viewing, and potential investments will be on display. So it's an opportunity to see what Paducah has to offer in downtown, and Melinda Winchester will be there to answer questions. Any Commissioners have something to say tonight? If not, we have executive session. Who has that?
I have it, Mayor.
Thank you.
I move that the Board go into a closed section for discussion of...
Forgot to ask one thing. I'm sorry.
No.
Sorry. Public comments. Any public comments? Okay, please read on.
Pertaining to the following topics. Proposed or pending litigation is permitted by KRS 61-810-1C, and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61-810-1G.
Second. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And we will not be coming back to make any comments or decisions.